Hi. Can you see me?
I can see you.
Yeah. My laptop crashed and is in for repair, so I'm using the iPad, but I haven't tried the iPad before, so.
You know, the image is clear.
Yeah, I can see me now. I just had to figure out the right distance.
Hi, everybody.
It's actually clearer than my laptop.
Chair Maggie.
Hello, Director Paul.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Commissioner.
I think, um.
Good evening, everyone.
Shing said he was going to be out, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good. Looks like we have everybody then.
I don't think we have all our invitees yet.
Yes, well, that's right, Corinne. On our end, it looks like we have.
There's a number of them, right?
Yeah, I think there's like seven, maybe eight. Right now, we have. Looks like none of the one of them, one of them was there for a while, probably just didn't come back. Yes, we have two of our visitors arriving. Our guests, I don't know what we call them, our invitees.
Our experts.
That's a good term, too.
So. So Madam Chair, Vice Chair Ching will not be in attendance, so I believe this is it.
Yep, that's right. Um, I don't think we have all our guests yet, though. As far as I can tell. Do we want to get started, or do we want to wait?
I'm okay to wait a few minutes, although we could go over the minutes and stuff while waiting for people to show up. I don't know how that would work.
Why don't we just give another minute or two before we start? That way, there won't be a big lull in the meeting.
I think we've got three now.
We've got two more.
So when are you ready, Madam Chair?
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for February 9, 2021. This regular Planning Commission meeting will be conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with the provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-2920 issued by the Governor. Corinne, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly, in alphabetical order, Commissioner Bookbinder.
President.
Commissioner Colville.
President.
Commissioner Cray.
Here.
Commissioner Rivlin.
Here.
Commissioner Zitzer.
Here.
And Chair Ostrowski.
Here.
For the record, Vice Chair Ching is excused this evening.
Thank you, Corinne. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, I had one note. So on item two, on page four of the minute, the project engineer said that the frontage was 33 feet. Planner Rose said on page six that it's 43 feet, and Commissioners Zitzer on page nine also said 43 feet. I think one of those is a typo or someone made a mistake or something like that. That's the only note I had on the minute.
Or the page numbers, Adam?
Four, six, and nine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Bookbinder. Do I have a motion for approval?
With that correction pending, I'll move approval of our January 26 meeting minutes.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Corinne, can we have a voice vote, please?
Oh. On this, sorry. Commissioners Bookbinder.
Aye.
Colville.
Aye.
Cray.
Aye.
Rivlin.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Chair Ostrowski.
Hi.
Six zero.
Thank you, Corinne. Director Kermoyen, do we have any communications for the commission this evening?
We do not. I believe each of the presenters tonight will have their own information to present, but nothing new.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, this is the point in the meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. And you may speak for up to five minutes, but the Planning Commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak ahead of our agendized items? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and move to the meeting agenda. Before we move on to the topic for today, the Affordable Housing Developer Study Session, does anybody have any disclosures regarding this item?
I previously met with several of the presenters. I'm not sure if all of them are here, but at least I want to say three of the presenters I've met with to discuss pretty much what we're discussing tonight.
Thank you. Great, okay. So our planner tonight is Daniel Flama, and he will introduce our first item on the affordable housing topic.
Thank you, Chair Ostrowski. As noted in the memo included in your packet, so this is a study session requested by the Planning Commission. As soon as I'm done, I'll begin with a brief introduction by yourself. And then each of the attendees will be provided five minutes to introduce themselves and their organization and what they do and what barriers they see to building more affordable housing in Campbell. And then you will summarize those comments and the high level of themes that they provided. And then the commission will engage in a question and answer session with the attendees.
Great, thank you very much, Daniel. So I wanted to, on behalf of the Planning Commission and the city of Campbell, thank you all for joining us to discuss this very important topic and for sharing your expertise. Affordable housing is very important to our community and to our city. And we look forward to your insights and a productive discussion afterwards. So I think what I will do then is kind of go down and everybody will have five minutes. So can we start? Is it Jan Lindenthal?
Absolutely. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can, thank you.
Okay. I do have just three slides I was gonna share with you, if that's okay.
Perfect, yep. You should be able to share. If not, let us know.
There you go.
Okay. Well, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to join you for the study session and also for the time that you're putting in to learn more about this issue. So my name is Jan Lindenthal. I'm the Chief Real Estate Development Officer at MidPenn Housing. MidPenn Housing is a nonprofit affordable housing developer. We were founded 50 years ago by a group of citizens in Southern San Mateo County who were concerned about the lack of affordable housing back in 1970. And the mission statement that our founders crafted back then resonates as much today or even more so than it did then. We build safe, affordable housing of high quality. We're a long-term owner. We build our communities to last with the goal of providing housing that brings stability and opportunity in the lives of our residents. And we do this by building homes near great jobs, schools, and transit. And by offering onsite resident services such as our free academic-based onsite after-school program. We foster diverse communities. Our homes target working families, seniors, people with special needs, all members of our community. And we want our residents and our neighbors to live in dignity, harmony, and mutual respect. That's core to our mission. The, we own one property in Campbell. It's on Sharman Palms Lane, 60 units that MidPenn actually acquired back in the 1980s using some old HCD, state HCD funding programs. And in 2015, we did a substantial renovation of those four-plexes on Sharman Palms Lane. And so they're now, they've been completely renovated inside and out for the 60 families that live there. As I mentioned, we serve diverse folks from families, seniors, people with special needs, formerly homeless men, women, and children. So now to the barriers. And this is a very pertinent, relevant, urgent topic. Building affordable housing is more challenging today than it ever has been. I've worked in the Bay Area building affordable housing since 1992. I've worked in the Bay Area building affordable housing since 1992. I started out working for the Housing Authority of Santa Clara County back then. And this is today, in 2021, it's a very challenging time for a number of reasons. First, while the need has never been greater, expanding public and political will has created a pipeline of affordable housing projects throughout the state that must now compete for limited state resources. Second, there's differing and often conflicting requirements between the various state programs that make it very challenging to finance our projects. You may have heard about the Auditor Controller's Report that came out in late 2020 that identified the challenges of these conflicting requirements between the state programs. And so, as a result, the State Department of Housing and Community Development put a pause on all of their notices of funding until they aligned their programs. So, there's projects sitting and waiting while the state does that alignment work at a time when this crisis has never been worse. We continue to see the impact of high construction costs here in the Bay Area, notwithstanding the recession that we're in. And that is attributed both to the shortage of trained construction labor, but also material price increases associated with the coronavirus. And finally, there's a lack of local funding. So, in Santa Clara County, we're fortunate to still have Measure A funds at the county level, but those funds really only finance certain types of homes, and those are homes that we need. But they don't, but those funds are not as flexible as, as we would like to see. So, we're still seeing the impacts of the loss of redevelopment more than 10 years ago with the lack of funding at the local level to provide that important matching funds. And although we're continuing to see support for high-density solutions, that's something that we're going to continue to have to work on if we're going to build as much affordable housing as we need. And I look forward to answering your questions and hearing what the other presenters have to share and participating in this dialogue. So, thanks again for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you very much, Jan. So, next, we have Shashank Agarwal.
Yes, hi. I am Assistant Project Manager for Fund Housing. I actually have Rob Wilkins, who's our Regional Director, on this call. So, maybe I'm just gonna let him speak.
Thanks, Shashank. Hi, I'm Rob Wilkins, Regional Director with the firm Housing. We are headquartered out of San Diego. We have a satellite office in San Jose in one of our developments called Bills on the Park, which is 100% supportive housing, which is what we specialize in, I would say, and aligns with Measure A as well. The reason why I'm on this, we're on this call is because we have a development near City of Campbell at 3090 Bascom Avenue. And we got an invitation to join, so thank you for having us join. That project, you know, we're not seeing, we're not seeing difficulties in getting projects entitled because we have these streamlined laws from the state, which are great. I would just echo Jan's last slide about, about the financing. It's, it's an ever-changing landscape on, on different levels, whether it's the city. We have a lot of projects in the city of San Jose, for instance, and they have an NOFA coming out that doesn't align with the SIBLAC, the bonds that we get, the high resource areas. And in this last round, we saw that projects that were in high resource areas and that were special needs or large family got a perfect score of 120 and got funded. And then if you, if you don't get that perfect score and you get 119, you have to battle lots of projects in a tiebreaker score, which we often lose out on. So, yeah, I mentioned the state at HCD, they're, I would say, a mess. It's hard to know what's going to come out of there anytime soon. So, yeah. I think there are some delays I've seen for the timing of financing. NOFA is getting pushed back indefinitely or not knowing exactly how much is going to be in there. We've seen a lot of regulatory agreements come up, whether that's an inclusionary regulatory agreement or density bonus regulatory agreement, or SB 35, one of these streamlined laws, regulatory agreements that often hold this up some because of the city attorney. And then I also put down here PG&E also kind of holds this up sometimes because they come up with surprises. But at the end of the day, it's the financing challenge that's the hardest. And I'll pass it back.
Great. Thank you very much, Rob. I appreciate your input on that. Next, we have Dixie Lyra Bous from Eden Housing.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thanks for my colleagues, Jan, and Affirm for joining in on the conversation as well. This is definitely a conversation we as an industry have been having for a while. I am the Associate Director with Eden Housing, charged with advanced planning, acquisitions, and special projects for the Development Division. Eden Housing's been around since 1968, is a nonprofit affordable housing developer, operator, resident services company. We own 34 properties in Santa Clara County totaling just about 2,000 units. So, we're heavily vested in the county area. Our challenges that we, that we see in developing and financing affordable housing properties is, it's no secret. There's no secret sauce. It's a matter of sources not matching uses. And it's also a matter of construction costs which have escalated. And while pandemic has certainly helped with labor costs, it's absolutely not helped with material costs. For, and a good example is just in the past six months, one of my projects that is in finance closing right now has sustained over 200% increase just in lumber cost alone. And that's a significant impact. That is a seven-figure impact that we've got to shuffle around, value engineer out, and solve for just to produce 73 units of affordable housing. Our challenges aren't like any, anything that hasn't been mentioned yet, specifically as it relates to the priorities at the state level. And while it, there is no doubt in our minds that Santa Clara County has a very, very, very large unhoused individual and family challenge that we've, we've been facing. We haven't been facing this just recently. This has been an escalation that I have seen over the last 10 years. I live in the city of San Jose and am active in the county and have seen homelessness increase over the past five years significantly. So, it isn't just a pandemic issue that has cropped up. It has been systemic. It has been increasing at rates in which we can't, we can't solve for. Part of the solution comes in how much money do you throw at creating homeless housing, or how do you prioritize who deserves to have a home? Our seniors deserve to have a home. Our families deserve to have a home. And we're not even counting the people who are what we call missing middle. They also deserve to have a home. So, our challenges in creating affordable housing spans all the way from the homeless individual or family all the way up to the person who is working at some of our universities and our higher education. It simply is not enough homes to go around, and there simply is not enough affordable homes to go around. Some of the ways that you can help is you can be proactive in having dialogue and coming up with active solutions. It is sometimes a solution that's outside the box that, that is often one that might produce a short-term or even a long-term solution. One that we have seen is just the ability to be flexible in the city policies that are created so that you can be nimble and you don't have to rely upon going back to City Council, Planning Commission to get a tweak in some of your policies. In other ways, there's been active dialogues about how do you involve your market rate developers in how they produce their inclusionary housing units? There are some creative ways to do it off-site. There are some creative ways to do it where it actually helps pay for that. A little bit of money from someone building market rate homes can go ways when we're leveraging those dollars with other dollars at the state level. So, again, some of the issues that we're going to face in the next coming years, and one that we're only talking about a little bit, but we do need to focus on in the long term, is preservation of our affordable housing units that we have right now. Our housing stock is getting older. It's, they're starting to become obsolete in terms of physical conditions. But they're also being lost when regulatory restrictions expire or some, or some non-affordable housing developer purchases a property and just sits on it for a while. We lose those units and we cannot gain those units back, certainly not for the amount of money it cost us to build a unit. In Santa Clara County, I've seen units cost anywhere from $600,000 to just shy of over $1 million a unit. That's an affordable housing unit. That's land costs. That's fees from cities. That's construction costs. That's financing costs. That's engineering architectural fees, and that's impact fees. So, there isn't just one, one solution that can fix it, but there isn't just one problem as well. So, I think that, you know, having this kind of dialogue and putting our heads together collectively, both as an industry and as stakeholders, I think is the right step. Thank you so much for inviting me to be part of this discussion.
Great. Thank you very much for your input. So, next, I'd like to welcome Mary Jane Jagadzinski.
Good. Thank you so much. If I may show a few slides.
Certainly.
I'm Mary Jane Jagadzinski. I'm Senior Vice President with Community Housing Works. And I'm joined here by Steve Swazicki, who is Director of Acquisitions. All right, let's see here. Just by way of introduction, Community Housing Works is a 32-year-old nonprofit. We were founded and still based in San Diego, but we work across California. Our presence in Santa Clara is we purchased a 200 apartment development about two years ago with no local funding, no state funding. We have some secret sauce. It was able to be resyndicated and it's undergoing renovation right now. So, as a nonprofit, we really have this, this diagram that's looking at affordable housing is the platform for success and the base. And from that, we build community stability, financial fitness for residents all the way to their realizing their dreams. The blue on the outside of this bullseye is also resident services that really help, help residents, you know, really achieve their dreams. Just a couple of things about us, we, without going into a lot of detail, we have been recognized statewide, nationally, as a leader in sustainability, going back to the, you know, early 2000s. And moreover, we also, like our esteemed colleagues here tonight, really are always focused on on time and on budget. And at this time, a very high cost, that is, is a commitment we take very seriously to our stakeholders, our lenders, investors, and of course, any of our, our local government partners. Just to again, give you a couple of things, and then I'll comment on some of the challenges. Arden Way is land we purchased in Sacramento. It's under construction now for 120 units. We used Kelly J. Bay's MIP, which is a mixed income program. We pivoted very quickly when that came out last fall, and it's under construction. The one on the bottom is in San Diego, and it's land we bought several years ago. And this one is a combination of city, county, state, MHP, and also includes some supportive housing units and VASH for veterans. Top is a, one in, under construction in the city of Vista in northern San Diego County. It's a artist preference. And it's really a cornerstone of revitalization of this area, working with the city to, to make a splash, if you will, for an area that they want to revitalize. Keeler is also under construction currently in, in San Diego. Couple of others, just so you know, North Park Seniors in San Diego really won a lot of attention. It's a seniors, but it is a San Diego's first LGBTQ-affirming senior development. Another senior below is an Oceanside. That's 138 units. And a real cornerstone was one, and this will be it on my pictures, but this was a real cornerstone where we worked very closely with the city of National City on an area that is a larger, large revitalization. You can see from the aerial. This was done, 201 units and includes the whole menu of finance. So, you know, as, as our, our industry colleagues indicated, you know, we have multiple challenges. The challenge of cost has really gotten astronomical. And even our, our contractors shake their heads and scratch their heads, and COVID didn't bring it down. If anything, costs are steady. So, that's something we're always looking at, better ways to do this and faster, but it's, we face this. You know, time and entitlements. If, if there are cities that are able to do an overlay by right, that helps a great deal in certainty of obtaining entitlements to allow us to enter the merry-go-round of assembling our finance. Because all roads in affordable housing lead to finance. It's, it's a layer cake, as our longtime former CEO used to call it, or a lasagna, built up of, of sometimes local, some various states, and one's got to precede the other to show leverage. These are competitive programs that applications change frequently. Windows of, of application sometimes are not set and are erratic. So, if you have, if you have land control and you have entitlements, you can pivot extremely quickly. As we did actually in Sacramento on Arden, we pivoted that project without going into details very quickly, and today it's in the ground. It was shovel-ready, and now it's in the ground. Funding, you know, any, any local gap is, is important to leverage state money. The state money is still there. It will run out at some point per gap. But I think big bugaboo right now is what's happened in California in the last year, which has to do with, as you all know, our, the, our tax exempt bond allocation is oversubscribed by two or three times for the first time ever. And it has made the so-called 4% tax credit, which accompanies taxes and bonds, competitive. So, people are lined up. It's a, it's a traffic jam on the Bay Bridge, just trying to get through that SIBLAC. I was the first SIBLAC director way back in the Dark Ages under Jeff Sunru. And our new CEO, Sean Spear, was a name well-known to many of you as SIBLAC for years. And we don't have any solutions either, so it's a, it's a tough game. So, again, anything that city can do to help us move toward entitlements and any kind of, of help, even regional, regionally working to assemble that local gap funding helps a great deal in getting through all of these other hurdles that we're all working to solve. I really appreciate the opportunity to introduce ourselves and talk with you today. And Steve and I are here if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. And next, we have Alex Shore from Catalyze Silicon Valley.
Hey, everyone.
Hello.
Thanks so much for being here. Sorry I was a little later. Was in a finance committee meeting. So, should I just answer the big central question?
Yeah, I mean, if you can just introduce yourself and your organization, and then, yes, the big challenges to building more affordable housing.
Sure. So, I'm the co-founder and Executive Director of the local nonprofit here in Silicon Valley, Catalyze SV. And we were formed because, as you, many of you know, and the, the central question we're talking about here, we've had many, many years of community opposition to more housing and better development in our community. And so, Catalyze SV is all about how can we get the community more engaged in the development process in order to build more sustainable, equitable, and viable? in the development process in order to build more sustainable, equitable, and vibrant places for people? So when I was thinking about tonight's conversation, I, I thought, you know, if I could put it in as plain language as this, the number one reason why we don't have more affordable housing is because we don't have the community and political will for it. And we, part of the challenge is we have a community engagement process in many cities in California that is, to put it lightly, is broken at times. Uh, we have a lot of folks who show up in the communities in which Catalyzed SV exists, and the folks who show up as part of the community engagement process and the public decision-making process don't always represent the full diversity of our community. And they don't represent it necessarily demographically, and sometimes they don't represent it in terms of viewpoints. And so when we have the table of who is at this discussion around community development, we don't always have the full diversity of our community. And the second challenge is that, once we're at the table, the way we're having those conversations can be very, as you all have probably experienced on the planning commission, they can be divisive and vitriolic and unproductive, and there can be people yelling at each other, and there can be people grandstanding in front of a large audience, and everyone just wants to go home at the end of the night and have a big glass of scotch because it's such a charged and stressful experience. And so for Catalyzed SV, it's about creating a community engagement process from that first community meeting that the city might hold with the developer to the time when the city council votes to approve the project, uh, to create a community engagement process that invites everyone to the table and thus is inclusive, and then once they're at the table, that it's as collaborative as possible so that we can create basically a triple win. One, a win for the community, two, a win for the city and its goals, and three, a win for developers who are building our communities, uh, including some of the affordable housing developers here tonight that Catalyzed SV has worked with. And so a big part of our work is this community engagement piece. How do we create a better process? Because our model, our theory of change that says, says that a better process will lead to better outcomes, will lead to more trust in government and its officials, will lead to community members feeling empowered, that they can shape development for the better without denying anyone else the opportunity to live here, and for developers to feel like they can build projects that have community support and have the amenities that we need to make them go forward. So part of marshaling the community will is allowing a process that's a little bit better. And so we work with city governments and talk to them not just about their policies, if they have one, but also about their practices. So if you want a working mother to show up to a community engagement meeting, uh, public meeting about a development, can you provide food and childcare so that that working mother or father can actually attend a meeting held between five and nine o'clock at night, just like this meeting is, so that they can be there? So how do we bake in, no pun intended, inclusivity and an inviting accessible quality to the public decision-making process? And then the other thing that Catalyzed SV does, and the reason we've had a chance to work with folks like MidPenn and Affirmed that, that are here tonight, is that once a month, those developers like those will present to our members. And our members who exist throughout Silicon Valley will basically score projects based on categories that we have up on our website, one of which is affordability. And so when we're talking to developers about their projects and we're trying to get them more affordable, we're basically advocating for a few things, um, three to four things. Number one, how much affordable housing are they building onsite? So there are times when a developer, either on their own or through the public engagement process or through conversations with council members, uh, or through decisions by, say, the planning commission, will decide to reduce the number of homes. And what we would say is that these are fifty-year decisions. This building is going to go up, and it'll be there for fifty years. And it's so difficult for affordable housing uh, projects to get the land that they need to build, that we can't lose any units in this crisis. And so we ask developers to build to the, what the general plan and zoning allows for that site. The second thing we do is we say, uh, if it's a market rate project, can you build the affordable housing onsite if there's a city requirement that you do so? So we want more integrated neighborhoods where people from different socioeconomic statuses can live in the same, not just neighborhood, but even the same building. And so we'll say to them, hey, can you build that affordable housing as part of your market rate project to create a more integrated community? And then the third thing we might say to them is, can you, in fact, if you are building affordable housing onsite, can you make it more deeply affordable for the folks who are most vulnerable and have the least income and need a place to live? Otherwise, they'll be out on the streets, or they already are on the streets. So for us, part of building that community and political will is showing the developers that there are folks out there who support more affordable housing. And that advocacy approach that we take is what we call our yes-and approach. Yes, we want development, and we want it to be more sustainable, more affordable, and more vibrant. So it's about asking developers to build the best projects possible for the, that'll provide the most good for the most number of people.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I think that'll get us into a, a really, um, good discussion. So I think that was everybody. I hope I didn't miss anybody. Great. Okay. So I will summarize our, the themes that I heard, and then my fellow commissioners will also weigh in in case I missed anything. And then we will, um, move on to a discussion and starting with questions from the, um, commission. Um, so it sounds like, um, the biggest impediments to building affordable housing come down to, um, cost, um, a lack of local funding, um, as well as the, um, the policies and differing and conflicting requirements for, uh, state housing programs. Um, there were comments made about, um, the need to streamline the laws and have more flexibility in the policies, um, as well as working with developers to add, um, uh, and be flexible with inclusionary housing. Um, certainly, we heard that there was a lack of community and political will and that the, um, the process needs more, um, engagement from the, uh, community. And, um, I also heard the, somebody mentioned there was a secret sauce to building more community housing. So, you know, maybe we can elaborate a little bit on that as well. Now I'd like to, uh, open it up to my, uh, fellow commissioners to, um, add to that list, or we can start off with questions if we don't have any other additions.
I think it's, I think you summed that up pretty well. If anybody else has anything to add, I think that covered everything that I caught out of that.
Great. Thanks, Adam. All right. Who would like to start off our, uh, our discussion here and?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Okay, first of all, just for transparency's sake, I didn't know, uh, I, I'm, uh, I'm acquainted with Alex. I didn't know he was going to be at this meeting, so we haven't discussed this, but, uh, he's, uh, one of my son's closest friends, friend, and I've known him for a long, long time. So just, just for the sake of total transparency, I, I do know Alex. Um, I do have a question for Mary Jane. She mentioned entitlements, and I'm, I'm afraid I'm a bit ignorant on this stuff. So, um, maybe you could just very quickly elaborate on what you talk about in terms of entitlements.
I think the discretionary planning approvals, I'm not a planner either. Um, but, um, you, you know, so, you know, you can go all the way through a, a very, uh, elaborate, uh, SEQA process. Um, many times, there is a locally adopted specific plan that already has at least the bare bones. Um, the city of San Diego has some overlays such that, that literally you can come in without more than a ministerial review, um, of, of your, of your site plan and, and your typical elevations, as long as you otherwise meet the criteria. So what, what does that do? That takes away, um, time, the, the length of time of submitting, um, you, you know, the, the, the package that has to go through a very extensive review and then come to a planning commission. Um, it also, um, a few people mentioned the inevitable, um, community opposition. Um, and, you know, and, and so any chances for someone to say, oh, it's too high, it's not set back, it's dangerous for the poor children living there, et cetera, et cetera. All of those things, which often are guys for, we don't want to have a, um, a, a mix of, of incomes and people in our community. I mean, I've had people that opposed projects vehemently, and some were, you know, basically said, I don't want people making, you know, less money than X because they don't fit in our neighborhood. And that, in fact, was a case many years ago, when we built La Costa Paloma, which overlooks the fourth fairway of La Costa Resort Golf Course, uh, which is a beautiful development that now is, you know, been operating very happily in the neighborhood, but originally there was that concern. So anything you can do to cut down those opportunities, um, for opposition, um, I think benefits everybody in the long run. I hope that helped.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Lindenthal, you mentioned a, as one of the barriers, a preference for large projects, if I got that right. Um, could you expand on that? What do you mean by that?
I think, um, that may have been, I'm looking for her now, Dixie. Oh, there you are. I think that may have been Dixie who made that comment, Adam.
Oh.
But I did, I just, um, I, I serve on the board of Silicon Valley at Home, which is a nonprofit that works on housing issues in Santa Clara County, and Matthew Reed is the Director of Policy there at SB at Home, and he didn't have the link for tonight's meeting, so he's joined, and that's why you see two Jan Lindenthal's on your screen. So I just wanted to quickly introduce Matthew.
Yeah. Thanks for joining us.
I apologize. I'm the second Jan Lindenthal for the evening. Um, I didn't discover, I didn't have the link till the last minute. I appreciate that. Um, but I have been listening in some, um, so I'm, I'm really pleased to be here and be part of this discussion. We're, we're an advocacy organization that, that works on affordable housing countywide. Um, and work closely with developers and with city staff and with the community to try to figure out how to create more opportunities for affordable housing and make sure that we respond to the crisis which is really pressing, um, in the region. Um, so I'll leave it at that, but I, I'm looking forward to listening and participating in the discussion. Thank you.
I, I thank you for joining us. Commissioner Rivon, did you have?
Yes, I did, uh, see that comment about the Sherman, uh, Charmin Palms. Um, I'd like to maybe roundtable, but hear what the people here tonight, the, uh, you know, the developers and advocacy groups are doing in Campbell, and if, if not, what it would take to, to kick off some ideas, reach out to local developers or property owners. You know, some of our existing general plan shows, you know, corridors for densification and mixed use in certain locations. Sorry, that's a lot of background, but I'd just love to hear what your targets are with Campbell.
Well, mid, as I mentioned, MidPenn owns sixty units on Charmin Palms Lane, which is a series of fourplexes. And, um, they were, most of the properties were built in the sixties. So by the time we were able to renovate them in twenty fifteen, they were in desperate need of substantial renovation. And, um, we, it would have been much more efficient if we had been able just to tear the properties down and rebuild at a higher density. But at the time, the city's code wouldn't allow that because of the parking requirements. So that's an example of where, looking at areas like that, where you, where densification would be, um, would be preferred or would be a good solution, looking at how you could relax requirements like that to facilitate increasing density. We also tried, um, tried very aggressively to acquire additional fourplexes on that street, and it was very, very difficult. They're owned by individual owners that may just own one or two fourplexes, and they make a nice income off of those properties, and so that was very, very challenging. Um, and to the extent that, that the zoning would allow densification of those properties, that may incentivize some of those owners to either redevelop them themselves and create additional units there, or to sell their properties that they could be redeveloped in a more efficient way.
Yeah, if I could, uh, add on to a couple of things, uh, as it relates to, um, zoning, if, if I could, as well as areas that we've looked at, uh, and, um, backed off of, if you will, um, not necessarily for lack of political will, uh, or the will of the city, uh, in building housing, but because the land costs are simply prohibitive. And, um, one of the parcels of land that I was following very closely was off of Hamilton, um, at eight eighty, and the, uh, proposed in-and-out, uh, development uh, at the defunct, if you will, uh, Elephant Bar Restaurant. And that entire, yeah, I know you do. And we, we all know the challenges of in-and-out, you know, there is, whether or not I've eaten one or more, less than a thousand in-and-outs is, uh, debatable. Uh, but they're a busy place, and, and, um, but in looking at that, the, the, the area at this area, you know, there's the Kohl's back there, there's the, you know, uh, the retail that's, who knows what the future of our retail will be? We're certainly proving, uh, if anything, to be, um, finging beast in our retail habits. Um, but that is definitely an area that, um, is ripe for intensification with the need for some extreme traffic planning, because even now, it's a little bit of a grind to, you know, get through that without any housing whatsoever. Uh, and backing into single-family neighborhoods is very, very common, uh, along these quarters. So that makes it really, really challenging to, uh, be able to get the intensification you need to make your deal pencil, but at the same time, respect, um, our single-family home zones, uh, respect, uh, commercial area zones. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a dandy dance, so to speak. Uh, SB thirty-five has been helpful for us in many communities. Uh, SB thirty-five, of course, the buy-right, uh, development, uh, tool. Um, probably not very popular with a lot of cities because, uh, it, it takes a lot of, um, decisions on zoning out, uh, of the local, but, uh, it puts in the design review, which all have to be subjective. Um, I've seen that tool work very well, uh, when there is collaboration. So there might not necessarily be a planned collaboration with the community, uh, but I, I know that we have made it our practice to still go to the community, even though we aren't required to go to the community, just to inform and really to see if there are some ideas, because you are trying to create that win-win-win situation. So I will shut up at that and let it continue.
Yeah, I would just add that, um, we haven't looked in Campbell just because we, you know, or cities like it, just because we've had a model of, you know, we want to go to cities that we know have money, um, whether that's San Jose or Oakland, so we can match that up with county funding and hopefully get to our funding stack. Um, I would echo Dixie's comments about the streamlining laws. We've been very successful at SB thirty-five, uh, projects, and also AB twenty-one sixty-two, which is the supportive housing streamlining law, um, similar to SB thirty-five, but, um, you don't have to go through SEQA. There is no discretionary review. Like, uh, we also, you know, outreach the community, like on thirty ninety South Bascom, which is near Campbell. I mean, we've had five or six community meetings on that. We've made changes based on community input, uh, for long-term partners in these cities. So we want to make sure we do that community outreach, um, and take, and take their, it's a, um, concerns into consideration. It can be hard to go through that process, SB thirty-five or AB twenty-sixty-two for the first time with the city, because they're trying to figure it out as well, but, um, it's gotten better, at least in the cities that we, we, we've worked with, um, now that they have three or four under their belt. They have checklists and, and it's pretty smooth. Now that they have three or four under their belt, they have checklists and it's pretty smooth. No, that's all I'll say. Go ahead, Alex.
Chair, is there a time to answer Commissioner Rivlin's question?
Yes, you, yeah.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I I think I thought I heard a portion directed toward the advocacy groups as well. Is that right, Commissioner Rivlin?
Sure, I'd be interested in hearing, obviously focused in San Jose quite a bit. I'd love to hear any.
Sure.
Backgrounding.
I'm just gonna do a brief screen share to talk about the places we're engaged and and sort of why. So if that's okay, here's a map of all the projects we've gotten involved in, Commissioner Rivlin. Basically, we, where you see the stars are projects where we led community engagement, what we call our community visioning workshops, which is our reimagining of the community meeting to make it as inclusive and collaborative as possible. And then the pin, the other dots are the projects where we've done advocacy around them, where we've actually talked to the developer and asked for specific outcomes. So we sort of have a different lens for which type of advocacy or community engagement we might do, depending on which bucket it is in. I think for our project advocacy, if there were folks who are our members who are saying they wanted us to advocate around projects in Campbell, and there were few of them who maybe lived a few blocks from the project to sort of create a balance between our folks who are very regionally oriented and and thinking about regional solutions with folks who have a knowledge of the neighborhood. I think then we might do some project advocacy in Campbell potentially. And then with community engagement, we also have a service where governments can hire us to do community engagement right here under available services. So if there were folks in Campbell, either developers who wanted to work on a project and help bring the community together, or if the city itself wanted help facilitating community engagement, that's a service that we provide, and we'd be happy to work on on plans or specific projects in Campbell if if, say, the city wanted to hire us to do that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I had a question about um the different types of units that can be built. And I heard, you know, some discussion recently about tiny homes and and those types of things. I don't know a lot about it, but are there are there new types of units, you know, creative, different things that you're doing or seeing or have thought of or would like to do? That's a little bit outside of the normal box?
Uh we're doing our first modular project coming up, but I think we're a little behind the game on that. Some others have done it, but it's still kind of, in my mind, undetermined how much cost in time you save in that, but we're trying it on one, so we'll see how it goes.
So is the is the hope that you would save time, I mean, cost ultimately, right, and and in time, that's the?
Yeah, there's, yeah, um time is money, you know, you save, you save on time, that's the idea. Ultimately, there are some savings in materials and labor, but not a whole lot.
Thank you. Good luck with that. Be interesting to hear how that goes.
So in terms of like what you need, is there a particular kind of parcel that you need in order to be able to build on? Can you use like a, do you need a parcel of a certain size? Can you build a project on a six thousand square foot lot, that sort of thing?
Um and and actually, Steve Swazicki is, as I said, a Director of Acquisitions. Maybe I'm gonna cold call him in a second. You know, um you can, you can go really vertical if you've got the zoning. The problem isn't the density allowed, it's what you can finance. So all roads lead back to, you know, how, because as you go up, you're going to a different construction type. But Steve is is that is his every day of looking for the ideal magic unicorn of parcel. Go ahead, Steve.
Right, I'm, you know, I think at a bare minimum, we're looking for at least a parcel that's about four to four, four tenths to maybe half an acre at best, really, to to find the density that makes it work. You know, parking needs first, so really, location's going to be crucial in determining how much you do need to park anything. We are, we're also dealing with populations that sometimes don't actually utilize parking or cars, I should say. So um if we're dealing with a greater family population, I think you're probably looking at a one-to-one for at least those units, but for permanent supportive housing, you may not need as many. So it really is dependent on the transit amenities that are local. And just given that financing right now is so centered on high opportunity areas that are generally within transit corridors or neighborhoods that have sufficient walkability, I think that's really what we're looking for. But um we're, our developments typically are one level of podium, maybe two, with about four to five stories above, depending on how we structure them. So it gets expensive. Every level of podium adds, you know, four to five million dollars in costs. So it can be a very, very expensive additive. So, you know, finding that right balance location can really be crucial for all of that. So I think there's a lot of different inputs that go into that answer.
If I could just add also, you know, when bonds became competitive, they they sort of adopted what formerly was only the so-called nine percent tax credit amenity points. So now we're looking at parks, grocery stores, all of those kinds of things. So you're finding that that land that meets all of those factors to get the score in order you, so that you can get tax-exempt bonds from SIBLAC, which come with tax credits, which provides your equity. So I'm, and you know, again, all of our other, you know, esteemed competitors and colleagues in the industry, I'm sure can echo all of that mania with these applications.
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to add to what what Mary Jane and Steve were sharing is that parking does drive the the development plan. And so looking for those sites where you can reduce the parking because of the proximity to transit is key. But in addition to that, Campbell has such a vibrant downtown area. And one of the things that we've, Mid Penn has had great success in to date is designing and building affordable housing in downtown, taking advantage of the surface parking lots that exist in some of the downtowns throughout the valley. And in the case of downtown San Mateo, we're building two hundred and twenty-five affordable homes on an existing, two existing city parking lots, as well as five hundred additional city public parking spaces through a partnership with the city and through leveraging a variety of different funding sources. And then picking up on what Rob was saying about some of the tools available at the state, we were able to take advantage of a new law called AB seventeen sixty-three. And that allows you to increase the height of your building without increasing the parking. So it provides an extra incentive. So in the right location, in that case, we went from a five-story building to a seven-story building, added sixty additional affordable homes to that development. So we went from a hundred and sixty to two hundred and twenty-five. Now, that level of density may not be appropriate anywhere in Campbell, or there may be some locations where that kind of density could work. And that's where you, if you can put some small sites together, you may be able to get the kind of economy of scale that you need to be able to build more efficiently and make the most of what parking you do provide by locating it as close to good transit as possible.
You know, I guess I can chime in here. Commissioner Ostrowski?
Yes, please.
Yeah, this is great, and I really appreciate everybody's time. What a, what a great topic this is and what a tough topic it is. I think any one of us could sit here and, I mean, I could probably rattle off a thousand questions without even trying, believe me. But uh, you know, it's interesting, the Mid Penn, Jan from Mid Penn mentions that they started fifty-one years ago. So fifty years ago, the Planning Commission from Campbell was probably doing the same thing. And we have the same problem now, only it probably worse, so. And I do think that, you know, we're in a state where, I don't know if one or two cities in the whole state are meeting their state requirements for low-income housing. And there is a lot of political pressure from the state, you know, finally to kind of get the ball rolling. So that's a plus, too. But I do think that Commissioners Rivlin and Book, Bookbinder, with their last questions, kind of hit the nail on the head. So here we are, Campbell, we're a little city right in the middle of San Jose, the forty thousand. I I don't know that we have any city sites that are available for what would just be a low-income housing project. I don't know how we could put parcels together, per se, with, I I don't know of any private property owner that would want to do a low-income housing project, unless, of course, there was some kind of funding, government funding or grants that that, you know, I don't know of, that they could get. So I guess, and I've heard, I've heard what what, you know, Jan and everybody were saying just now and and Alex. You know, if you had the site. So so one thing Campbell Planning Commission can do is kind of has an advocate, is maybe find finding some areas where the density can be increased, where you wind up with a big project that includes a heavy component of affordable housing. But I guess, you know, just to kind of get us kind of focused on what the Campbell Planning Commission can do, what we can advocate for and get, you know, kind of get something going. I'm still, I'm still looking for some, maybe some simpleton ideas, just kind of help me. If I could ask, you know, the the nonprofit developers, just help me, what what can we actually do? How can we actually get get something done? Is it, is it advocating for greater densities? You know, San Jose's talking about no more single-family densities. I I don't know if Campbell would ever go quite that far. But is that kind of the big picture things that we can be doing? Or how do we, how do we get private property owners to kind of get together and assemble parcels that can make these projects work? Where I imagine you need three or four or five different funding sources to get your project started, so I know how complicated they are. So I guess that would be my question, just to, just to follow up on what Commissioner Rivlin and and Bookbinder already asked, is what, you know, what really can we do, Campbell Planning Commission or the Campbell City Council? What can we do to kind of get the ball rolling in some, some more of these projects? That would really be my, my overall question. Thank you.
You know, if I could take, take just the first comment on that one. One of the things that that I did early in my career was be involved in building a couple of buildings on the El Camino Real Corridor in the city of Santa Clara. And that was a really challenging corridor to build on because where where we built was backed up against the old quad area, uh which is historic older homes in very, very shallow lots, very long lots, but shallow lots. So it took a little bit of, um it took a little bit of planning, it took a lot of concessions by the city. But one of the things that the city actually did, and I and I sat on the General Plan Commission in Santa Clara and and just recently in the city of Gilroy, where we actually looked at these major corridors. And proactively, part of their zoning was, let's have the community all come together and say, you know, and plan what you want this corridor to be like as part of your general plan update and your housing element update. And that actually starts the conversation with your community. It starts getting that density conversation in there without imposing getting rid of four-family complexes, because I don't know that that's such a great idea either, you know. Housing, all housing types is a great idea, but where does it make sense? It makes sense in the corridors. You want a walkable corridor. I know that downtown area very, very well, you know, where it's, it's, you know, two stories of commercial, but you have maybe what, two floors of thirteen-foot plates? There's all that height that's not being used in that downtown area that could have housing on top of. That's not going to be changed overnight, but over time, that will be changed. And that's what we're talking about here is proactive planning tools for incremental changes over time.
Thank you.
So so I have a question about acquiring land and stuff like that. I mean, there, there's actually, you know, I've been in Campbell for a long time and know all the corridors. And, you know, we have a lot of, um, you know, old, you know, commercial strip mall areas, you know. We've got plenty of those on Bascom and Winchester and and some, you know, that 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 are fifty years old and they don't look great and, but, you know, they have tenants and landlords. And it would seem to me that there's plenty of places to put in some high-density affordable housing that would fit right in, you know, if you're on, you know, there's a place in South Abascom. You know, it's not far from the prune yard, it's not far from downtown. There's other places on on Winchester and such that, you know, we're a small city that you don't, you're not, you can, you know, the, the, the corridors aren't very far from the transit. We have like three, uh two or three transit stops and, you know, light rail and then downtown. So, you know, we're a city of six square miles. It's, it's pretty small. So so if you, if you can find a couple of places, the question I have, it, is it common to go in and be able to buy up some private property to put in affordable housing? Is that an option?
Um, I'll take that one. We, as affordable housing developers, have a few entities that we work with to get acquisition funding that is is not hard to access, whether it's the Housing Trust or the Community Housing Fund. There, there's lots of, there's a few companies or entities, nonprofit entities, that lend money up to, I think Housing Trust has one that went up to sixteen or eighteen million. And so at least for a firm, that's what, that's how we purchase these properties. And um, yeah, I would say, you know, you need at least sixty units, sixty-five units to even start talking about it, a viable project, but the more, the better. That's my comment.
Yeah, I would just add that that I think you're, you're hitting on something that is really a good point. Those underutilized strip malls are just, just like the surface parking lots. That's where the next wave of redevelopment is going to happen. So if you think about during your housing element update process, where you could put an overlay zone on some of those, some of those strip mall areas along the lines of what Dixie was talking about, focusing on your your corridors, I think you could, you could lay the groundwork for redevelopment. The Mid Penn has acquired, we acquired an old shopping center in Sunnyvale, right off of two thirty-seven. It was occupied with six or seven businesses. It was very difficult to relocate those businesses. And because public funding is involved, you have to follow federal and state relocation law. So those are things, you have to go into it with your eyes wide open, but with the right planning and and cooperation with the city, you know, we were able to make it happen. The one thing I would say, and this is where the city of Campbell does have a challenge in that you don't have local city dollars or not a lot of local city dollars to to put towards a project like that. Because even if we borrow money from the Housing Trust Fund or a source like that to actually acquire the site, we still have to layer on all the permanent sources that will help build the project. And so that land cost becomes part of the project if the city doesn't have the resources to contribute to it. That's where then we would be looking to county funds or state funds to to layer those sources in. Um, the good news is about having some of those interim sources, those bridge sources that Rob was talking about, is that you, you can move more quickly to be able to acquire a property when it becomes available. And and that's, that's, you can be opportunistic in that way. Um but the city putting that zoning in place so that you could look strategically at and and be able to, as a developer, take that risk to buy those properties before you have all of your approvals in place would make a huge difference.
Yeah, and to add on to what Linda just mentioned, you know, sellers are aware of the competitive environment that we're all working within. And so terms of any purchase become very, can become, become sort of like a gun at your head at points. So we're, we're all, we're all battling that at times to make sure that a project can indeed get through without hitting certain types of planning issues or community issues at that. So, you know, there's big risks. There obviously are some laws that are in our favor right now. But despite, you know, this COVID environment, we haven't seen a lot of opportunistic environment availability of land come online. So there's things to really keep in mind. It's still, there's still a lot of money out there, and people know what they're sitting on, so I'm going to add that. Just wanted to add that.
I heard a few comments and words and, you know, empty parking lots, number one, Campbell has quite a few of those, obviously. If you build on the parking lot, you have to preserve the parking because the existing tenants or land use requires that parking or else it wouldn't be there. But I'd like to hear a little bit more and I want to, you know, focus it on Campbell, but understand what's happened in the region. I'd like to understand a little more about public-private partnership, I heard a lot of private land acquisition. I don't know that, I'm in no way or shape or form advocating this, but, you know, I don't know if Campbell's lining up to give away land, but I know VTA has a few stations, one has a parking lot in Campbell. Is there any partnership with a regional county, city, VTA authority where you can build housing over a parking lot? Whether it's a transit station or like a strip mall and create a podium, but then all the tenants can just move into the new retail? And then you have housing for six floors above it. I'd love to hear a little bit more of creative use of land. Thoughts on it?
Well, we were just awarded one of the VTA sites in San Jose, where a number of uses will go on as well as improvements to the VTA site. And I would say it is a, it is a significant challenge. Mostly because VTA is in the business of transportation and we're in the business of housing and sometimes we just don't talk the same language. So you spend a lot of time educating each other. Both parties have to understand what they need. So there are opportunities, but I would say if it's VTA-owned land, I think the conversation has to begin with the city and the VTA organization having that discussion of, hey, VTA, what do you think about this? Whether, I can't go to VTA directly and say, hey, VTA, I think it's a great idea to do housing on this site. VTA will say to me, thank you Dixie, we'll take that into consideration. I don't have that kind of, that collaboration. The city, you as a city have that collaboration with that agency. I'm also working on another project in the city of Santa Cruz with a local transportation agency. And again, we're having the challenges of educating each other on various needs because that, that transportation infrastructure is still needed. Is still needed to keep that infrastructure there, is still needed to redevelop that area and is still needed to support the housing when the housing is there.
I get that. And it's definitely out of the scope of this meeting, but I have seen other cities, even on the West Coast, I know it's Vancouver or Seattle or, you know, other cities internationally that have created these transit partnerships. And VTA seems like they'd have that opportunity, and this is getting out of the purview of the meeting. But hopefully there's a future opportunity or point to other projects in the world that have taken advantage of that. And then, you know, hopefully it can come to Campbell, I think we only have one parking lot station, Winchester Station, but it could be a potential opportunity to build, you know, accessible housing, but also right on transit. And it has retail not too far away, so it'd be a great kind of mixed-use environment.
That's a great point. Did the other Jan Lindens all have a comment? Knock your hand up.
Matthew Reed, I want to touch on a couple of points, that the VTA, you know, I was trying to look it up online, but they have identified specific sites that they're actively courting for housing, affordable housing development. My memory, and I apologize, I can follow up, is that the Campbell Station is on that list. As Dixie said, it's not simple, even when all of the pieces are in place. But they are actively looking for ways of really augmenting the use of the stations as it has been in affordable housing is central to that challenge in the long run. So they're, they're, they're an eager partner, whether they're easy to work with, I can't speak to that, but it is a focus of their work. Earlier, one of the commissioners, I'm sorry, Cleo was, asked what you all could do. And I, my, I have an idea about that. You're about a very difficult period in which the planning staff in your city is going to have to make some pretty dramatic and difficult decisions about how to plan for somewhere in the neighborhood of three thousand new homes, twelve hundred of which roughly will need to be affordable. It's just a planning process. But it's gonna be a real challenge from this time. You have to actually say, this is where the affordable housing is gonna go. And so it's, it's pre-planning, a planning process that is really hard on its own and it's gonna happen citywide. And the role of a planning commission, the role of, of, you know, anybody working in that process is going to be to help to clarify how that process is working and frankly to provide support to staff who is going to be following state law. And it is, it is not going to be an easy community process and, and good or bad, it's something that, that everybody's going to have to go through. And so supporting the cities, the cities in creating a housing element that will be approved by the state is really going to require everybody's support because it's going to mean some difficult decisions. So I just wanted to add that, I think we all have a role to play in that process, but you all are clearly more informed and more engaged. And to the extent that that could be an ongoing part of your process, that'd be very helpful for staff.
Thank you for that input, Matthew.
If I can drop any question?
Yes, please, Adam.
What, what role do you see for so-called missing middle housing? We've been talking about, so we have a lot of single-family housing here and we've been talking about large-scale projects, which can be expensive to, just for some context, large-scale projects which can be expensive to construct. Is there a role for like fourplexes or bungalow courts, things, types of housing which are currently prohibited under zoning codes? But which are not, which can be built in smaller, on smaller lots and possibly more cheaply?
I think that those are viable solutions. I think the challenge is getting enough of them to have some economy of scale for the financing. So in order to secure the public funds, the state funds, the tax credits, you need some economies of scale. It's just not efficient to be able to do that for four units at a time, but if you could, like in the case of what we were able to do on Charmin Pond's Lane with property that we already owned, we, you know, sixty units and fifteen different fourplexes, they're not all contiguous to each other. So you can finance scattered site like that if you can acquire enough properties to get to that economy of scale.
Okay.
This is definitely a topic that I've studied mathematically and I've studied it for probably the last eight years. And the true multifamily, high-density, missing middle in California, particularly in Santa Clara County is impossible. And I'm just gonna say it's mathematically impossible. When you're over the eighty percent AMI income limits, you're fully taxed in terms of real estate taxes. When you're, when you're trying to keep your AMI levels between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent, which is your true middle-income households, anytime you go over eighty percent AMI, you have to pay full property taxes on that unit. Can't get those dollars back in raising rents and operating expenses are what operating expenses are. One of, one of the conversations that we've had in depth over the years was going back to the fourplex, the eightplex scenarios, which kind of blend in. And that's where you're probably not going to see an Eden Housing participating in this type of development, but we're not the only developer out there. There are other developers out there who specialize and who do good work in those eightplexes, those fourplexes. And supporting them financially to have those missing middle might be the best solution. Again, it's small incremental changes, I think you get there, you just don't get there real fast.
Well, I would just add, those are, to me, those are kind of two, two separate parts of your question, Adam. There's the missing middle, which Dixie spoke to, just the economic viability of that. And then there's creative solutions to increase density in some of your existing neighborhoods, your existing fourplex neighborhoods where a fourplex could become a sixplex or maybe even an eightplex. The, the issue around the quote-unquote missing middle is that every county's area median income is increased by HUD every year based on the American Community Survey work. But in certain markets like Santa Clara County where rents are out of step with incomes, HUD makes special adjustments to those median incomes. And what that means is that median incomes, published median incomes in Santa Clara County have gone up more than ten percent per year for the last several years. Well, that's not true for actual households that live in Santa Clara County, their incomes aren't going up ten percent per year. So you end up with this disconnect between the incomes that you can serve through affordable housing and where the market is. Because the eighty, what is considered low income, eighty percent AMI is now high enough that it's actually meeting that quote-unquote missing middle. Five, six, seven years ago, there absolutely was a gap between the people who made too much to qualify for affordable housing, but not enough to afford market rate housing. Now those two levels have really come into come into equilibrium where because of these increases by HUD of area median income, which doesn't necessarily track with household income.
Okay, that makes sense, so.
Briefly to Adam. There are market solutions, I think that Jan is sort of speaking to that some. But the, this is an area that we're in as well. And part of the focus is to figure out how, how to lower the cost for market development in your city even as you support affordable development and to the extent that units can be smaller, that they can be situated next to transit so that the parking requirements aren't as high and the development costs are lower, that they can be higher density. There are ways of bringing the cost down so that they start to address some of those issues that you're talking about. I mean, in, in other residential neighborhoods is another way of creating price points in your market in different parts of your city that don't currently exist. The disconnect between what it takes to rent an apartment, which is very high, and what it takes to actually purchase and stay in your community, if, if you, you know, have kids and want to be in a neighborhood is it's probably a hundred and thirty thousand dollar household income gap between what it takes to buy a house and what it takes to rent a house and your rents, like everybody else's are about the highest in the country. So trying to figure out how to create opportunities between those, Adam, is really critical. And part of the housing element process is going to be taking a hard look at that. Because the, to show not just where the market rate housing is going to go, not just where the lower income affordable housing is going to go, but also where moderate income opportunities are going to be available in the city. And so it's a tremendous opportunity to have that discussion. Not an easy discussion, but figuring out how to build more efficiently and create more options will help.
So in terms of how much, so I've heard that like the total all-in cost for a unit can be very high between six hundred thousand and one million dollars per unit, but also that there's this sort of Rube Goldberg machine of funding sources that get put together. How much city funding does it take? Assuming that you can acquire the land and that the entitlements from the city are not a problem, how much does it cost per unit if you have a parcel of optimal size of between point four and point five acres? And like in the best case scenario, how much per unit do you need from the city?
I would say what we, what we're typically seeing on our new construction projects today would be the public funding gap. So after your permanent mortgage and the equity from the tax credits that you can secure, the public funding gap, which could come from city, county, state, some combination of those three, is in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars per unit. Okay, I'm seeing Dixie and Mary Jane on there, okay, good. So, and that, I would say, for example, right now, we're working on a new development in the city of Sunnyvale. And there, the city is contributing about sixty thousand per unit to that project. And the rest of the sources will come from state and county sources. So the city doesn't have to fund that whole piece, but a significant chunk oftentimes.
In the city of San Jose, for instance, you go to a hundred and twenty-five thousand per unit. So you still have at least half of that gap that Jan talked about to get somewhere else.
Can I ask a question? I asked this question a couple of years ago to, at a seminar by SV at Home that had developers explaining the, the cost structure and the costs involved and, you know, their number was like seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand a unit. And so the question I ask is, here in the, here in the South Bay, so. I don't know if any of you can answer this, although you have done developments in other parts of the state. I have a son who moved to Sacramento a couple of years ago. And they got, they went, they ended up buying a house in a nice neighborhood that would be, instead of it being five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it would be one point two million here in Campbell. Okay, and this is in Sacramento, you know, not, not in Tracy or, or Stockton, right? So my question was, why is the, how could you, how can you, and you know, the rents are much lower in Sacramento too. So it's like the discrepancy, how do you, how do you account for the discrepancy in terms of costs? If you can, two, two hours northeast of here, you can buy, you can, you can build something in theory at half the price or less than here.
Well, I don't think you're building it at half the price. I think the market of existing, I mean, yeah, there's, and actually I have family live in Sacramento and my, my niece just said someone across, across, down her street just paid forty thousand over, over the asking price for a home, you know, in a lovely established neighborhood, because it came from the Bay Area and it was so much cheaper. But, you know, as we, as we build across the state, land definitely has different costs. Labor has different costs prevailing, especially when it's prevailing wage because you're looking at kind of area. But it's, it's not, materials are not that grossly different. So it's, you know, it's expensive to build everywhere in, in California of a certain type. Now, if you can go out to parts of Imperial County, for example, or, you know, other areas where you can do a very low-density, lot of land, two-story walk-up, no elevator, at construction type costs less. But as soon as, you know, as Steve was talking about, as soon as you start adding that podium, as soon as you go over four stories of wood frame, costs start going up dramatically. And then on top of that, you get, you know, Bay Area in, in certain markets, extreme labor costs. I don't know, I don't know how to describe the, you know, Sacramento versus, versus Bay Area and maybe Steve can talk about that in terms of how the imputed value is, 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 you know, costed in land, but it isn't necessarily in the GC contract.
Certainly, you know, we have a hundred and twenty unit project that's currently in construction in Sacramento right now. Our residual land value on that per unit was approximately eight thousand dollars. And that may have been a deal. However, you know, I think the, the Santa Clara Office of Support of Housing has set sort of a bar of about fifty thousand a unit for projects within Santa Clara County. I don't think many people have been able to hit. I don't think many people have been able to hit that realistically. We all struggle for it. However, you know, realistically, the average is probably about $65,000 to $70,000 a unit. So you end up coming up against that cost and also terms, too, where you, again, you sort of have a gun at your head to move quickly without assurances.
So if I had this right, on the one hand, land costs are high, so you're incentivized to build taller, but once you go over four stories, the construction costs become higher. So there's this sort of, you're being sandwiched on both sides and it's harder and harder to make things pencil out, it sounds like.
Absolutely. Here's a quick example is a project we were working on down here in San Diego, a smaller project by most, in most senses, 45 units. It's now designed as a four-story wood frame building. We were able to, and originally, we had four stories of wood frame over one level of podium. By shaving off that level of podium, about $3.5 million of cost went out the door. So and mind you, if you're building any type of building that's going to have parking beneath it, you are going to need a podium-type design. So again, it comes back to how you're going to park that and how that, again, eats first.
May I follow with a question? And it probably won't apply in Campbell, but has anyone in this region done a zero parking project? And how did you achieve that?
We have.
We switch to having to talk. Turn on my video if you want.
Stephen, I think there's some volume coming out of your microphone.
Thank you.
We have, we have one project in downtown San Jose, actually mentioned earlier, Bill's on the park, does not have any parking for the residents, 83 units. But it is all support, it is all supportive housing. Doesn't mean that they, some people didn't have cars, but to get in those units, you find, I think, that if a person has a car, they'll sell it. Or there's the next person on the list, if they want to keep that car, they will put it in there. So it is possible. I know this is a permanent supportive housing building, but especially if you're near transit, there are ways to really get down to a lower parking ratio. And I should mention that the state laws that we've been talking about, AB 2162, SB 35, they also have reductions in parking that we take advantage of.
Did that project follow zoning or required a variance or how did that go about?
Nope, it did not, just because there is a zero parking required for supportive housing units. And that's what we want.
We're doing a zero parking in downtown San Diego, but again, it's transit. But you've got better transit in the Bay Area than we still do in San Diego, certainly, in terms of proximity and frequency of headways. So if there is a spot, I think it is entirely possible to build that. I think, harking back to some of the earlier discussion about the messaging, that planning and city council and the political will. And I know it's hard, but being able to really say, we are doing this and no, we're not doing two cars per apartment and people are going to scream and they're going to use parking as a proxy for not wanting other income groups in their neighborhood. But I think, you know, I've seen cities just successfully hold the line. And I think we all, you know, we're all very good developers and owners on this call. And I think we are, we carry, we care a lot about our stakeholders in the neighborhood. So once we're there, I don't think the problems materialize. But it's getting to that, you know, that hard time of being able to tell a vocal group in the audience, no, we're really committed to, you know, having affordable housing go in this area.
Alex, did you want to add to that?
Oh, just, it might be helpful to some of the commissioners as you're out talking to the community about parking issues. There's an analogy that I like to present to folks that really resonates with all of us as regular people, which is when we're driving down, say, 101 in rush hour traffic and it's bumper to bumper, and we say to ourselves, gosh, I wish there was just one more lane of traffic. Could they just spend millions and millions of dollars if they could just create one more lane? Wow, I could move faster and so could everyone else. And of course, I could see Chair, you're smiling because we all know what happens as soon as you widen the highway, it gets filled with cars again. The concept transportation planners call as induced demand, that if you create so much more of a good, people will find a way to use it. And when I explain that as a rationale for providing fewer parking spaces for developers in their projects, I'm hopeful that that analogy helps people understand that the field of dreams quote, which is if you build more parking, they will come. And so I hope, as you talk to folks, that you'll keep that in mind, that especially with all the problems we have with global warming and affordable housing and walkability and public health, that there are so many more goods, there are so many more priorities higher than where do we put our cars? And so I think people need to realize that if you just, we social engineer for all these things and we can social engineer differently and create different outcomes that might create better solutions for our communities.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I think it's something that really resonates with this planning commission as we see projects come before us. Oftentimes, there are many parking requirements and we look very carefully at the location and the proximity to transportation and the goals we want to have for the city in terms of other impacts, such as the environmental impacts and the walkability that we want to increase the availability of community and a walkable community. So I think a lot of this is really, you know, everybody's input is really resonating here. And I'm very grateful for everybody's comments and feedback. And I think the, you know, really focusing on the general plan update, the discussions that we had around the old strip malls and what vision do we want to have for Campbell? And how do we, how are we going to accommodate these additional 1,200 affordable housing units? I think the feedback that we've heard here tonight helps us get a bit closer to that in terms of what we're going to be working on over the next year with the general plan update and talking about higher density. And I do feel, you know, I agree, there's oftentimes pushback from the, from the community and everything that has been stated here really, really does resonate. But I also feel like there kind of is this, it feels like there's a real shift happening in our society that people are really wanting to help each other and to come together and to do, you know, more for everybody. And so I hope we can accomplish all of that together. So I think we're, we've got a few more minutes. If there are any other last-minute questions from the commission or comments from all of you, I'd love to hear those before we wrap up.
Commissioner Osbowski, I think you made a great point there. And I think it, I know Dixie and the other Jan mentioned the, you know, the community discussion, the density discussion. And I think, you know, obviously, that's happened region-wide, statewide. And the state's kind of forced it for good and for bad, mostly for good, I think. And it actually hasn't, you know, it hasn't come up as much in Campbell, but I'm sure it will with the housing element update. And I know it did to an extent with the general plan update and with the continued general plan update. So, yeah, I think that, I think these, all these discussions helped, helped us get to kind of where we're going. I would just ask one question if I could, as long as we got the nonprofit development developers here, if it's appropriate to ask. And because in terms of the for-profit developers and the inclusionary housing, you know, you know, 15%, I think, affordable units is kind of the requirement. And I think some cities have gone to 20%. Is there, what do you guys think is the percentage that does pencil out for for-profit developers in terms of the percentage of, you know, below-market rate housing that can still work for them? Is there a magic percentage number or does it kind of depend?
Commissioner, it's really all about dollars and cents. What is the cost that, what is the delta cost, you know, and what is that cost in unit? I've seen 15% cost prohibitive on a project that, you know, we're involved in, in Los Catos. But 15% isn't really cost prohibitive, say, on, you know, the east side in San Jose. So what is that delta between the market rate for sale and the cost to produce that housing unit in different geographic regions, sometimes within the same city limits? I think that's, that's the interesting thing. As hard as I try, I can't get my for-profit partners in cohorts to tell me what that number is.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any final questions before we wrap up?
Just to, just to be clear on this, we, there's a, what exactly is the connection between providing affordable housing and homelessness? Because we have a lot of homelessness in our community. To what extent is, like, are we able to solve that with, like, to what extent are we able to solve this? And just one other thing, Commissioner, Chair Ostrowski, I had a couple of questions for staff after this. I had been emailing, but they requested that I follow up during the meeting. If we can make time for that as well. But so the, how, to what extent can you help with homelessness?
Well, I think that the homeless housing crisis that we're seeing now is kind of the culmination of a perfect storm that started with the elimination of redevelopment agencies and the loss of that funding statewide in communities like Campbell and San Jose and Sunnyvale and Mountain View and, you know, that funding source that created, it was a billion dollars statewide that went into affordable housing, just went away overnight. So that in combination with the economy just taking off after the recession, especially here in the Silicon Valley. So in the Silicon Valley, as I'm sure we all know, because we all lived here, it, you know, we recovered fast, fastest. And, you know, with a lesser dip and a quicker recovery out of the recession. And as we all saw, you know, the office market accelerated, rents accelerated. I remember being in front of a planning commission in Redwood City probably about seven years ago. And there were people lined up at the podium talking about, and it was a study session just like that, talking about affordable housing and what can we do about it, what are the tools? There were people lined up at the podium saying, I've lived here for 30 years and I'm about to lose my housing. My rent went up $300 a month. And I think we all saw that in all of our communities and it just got away from us. And cities had no tools, no funding because of the loss of redevelopment to be able to stem that tide. So I think those, that, those are some of the contributors to this perfect storm. Now, to answer your question, can affordable housing address that? Absolutely. There's permanent supportive housing units needed, like the kind that Rob was talking about. And there's extremely low-income housing units needed for people who just don't make enough to afford any, even, you know, anything close to a market rate rent. So I think we absolutely can make a dent in the crisis that we're seeing, but it's not going to be easy and it's going to take time.
Yeah, and I think it just starts with Measure A money. If you're looking at homelessness, Measure A is a good place to start. In terms of funding, the permanent supportive housing units, you know, the homeless, it is a countywide system, which is kind of unfortunate, I think. But for the homelessness, the formerly homeless. But a lot of the, a lot of the funding programs are beyond Measure A, are, they incentivize people to include homelessness units a lot of the times, too. So the funding is kind of, has kind of gone that way to try to address this crisis. But, you know, we do the best we can, but it still keeps growing. So that's our dilemma.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank all of you on behalf of everybody here from the planning commission and the staff and, you know, all of our residents of Campbell. We are a very diverse community and it's very important that we think about how we're going to provide housing and resources in a great community for all of us. Your feedback has been very, very valuable. I learned a lot and I think everybody else here did, too. So this is certainly, we're going to be keeping this in mind as we go through and think, think through and look at projects and do our general plan update and working closely with staff on all of that. So thank you. And I think that we've got some questions for staff and then we're going to wrap up our meeting. So really, really appreciate all of your input and thank you for being here so late into the evening with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to jump, I'm going to jump off.
Great. Have a good night. Thanks, everybody.
See you guys later.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
So we have, Stephen, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Excellent. Hi, Daniel. All right, I think that Adam said he had a few questions for staff. So we'll move to that next.
Yeah, so just for a little background, I had asked about, if we remember the Mozart Avenue project where we were just hearing about delta costs and how the developer rather, set aside two rather than three units of the development for below-market rent, renting elected to Payne and Luffy of about $108,000. And I had asked Stephen where that went. The city has something called Fund 233 and that contains our affordable housing money. And Stephen, would you like to talk about, I guess I'm asking, can you talk about some of the resources, what are the resources that the city has, including the in-Luffy money?
You mean how much money we have?
Yes, in terms of city-owned property, in-Luffy accounts, yeah, money, land, and anything else that I'm not thinking of.
Yeah, I can speak to it in general terms. So really, following the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, the city rolled whatever remaining monies we had over to this new fund, Fund 233. It's in the budget, but it captures, it captures first-time homebuyer loans and other kinds of subsidies which we've had on housing units within our program. But also, like the Charmin Palms project, which was mentioned earlier, the city is deeply committed into that project and has a lot of funds tied up in that, for example. We also, within that fund, have $1.28 million of just cash reserves. But I, in separate emails to Adam, I was kind of indicating that this fund, although we've got $1.28 million of funding in it in cash, that's not tied up in some other type of agreement or loan. It's already projected to be expanded by 2034. And that's because each year, we are drawing down monies from that account to pay for our below-market rate housing administrator, which is House Keys, which helps manage our below-market rate housing units. The monies which we take in on projects like the Mozart project that Daniel had recently, there's a, the code provides the ability for that to either go towards the development of housing units, but also for it, just basic administration costs of our below-market rate housing program. And we have identified a lot of costs in that program. There's a legal aspect to it as well, which I imagine Bill could maybe attest to, that sometimes you don't always have people play by the rules and follow all of the agreements and uphold their ends of the bargain and arrangements. And we have to pursue those as well. And that comes at a cost to the city as well. So, yeah, just in big picture terms, you've got $1.28 million as it stands today. It's dropping more and more every year and it's going to run out sooner than later. So really, the direction we've gotten from council today is to use that money towards program administration costs and not toward. um, uh, program administration costs and not towards uh, acting as a developer.
Thank you very much.
Can you go into a bit more detail about uh, what you mean about uh, home loans? Are those like, is the majority of that like, it will mature in 30 years kind of home loans?
Um, yeah, I mean, we have a variety of different types of loans in the program. I, I couldn't sum them all up. Uh, so succinctly, we have some that we've loaned like 20 grand to help reduce the uh, the purchase price of a property. And there are obligations with that money. So it's kind of like part of a revolving home loan program, but we're not issuing new loans. So we do get some money back from those from time to time. Um, an example would be somebody sells their home or they want to buy out, the, the city's part of the loan. Uh, if that property is appreciated a certain percentage of value, they need to either pay us uh, simple interest based on the terms of the loan. So it might be, I don't know, 5% simple interest per year for the number of years that they held the loan, or the greater of that and uh, or the, the delta of the equity in the home, uh, of what the proportionate share of the 20 grand represented at the time of purchase. So imagine you had a hundred thousand dollar home, we give you $20,000, uh, that's 20%. So then when you sell the home, it's worth 20 million, you take 20% of that, and that's the proportionate increase. But it's the, it's the, it's the uh, the greater or the lesser of depending on which one, which, which particular agreement we're talking about.
Okay, so it, it's a program the city did in the past and the obligations are still there, but it's not something that we're currently doing more of now?
Correct.
Okay.
If I could just add some clarity to that. So that program, Commissioner Bookbinder, was um, originated and in, in existence when we had redevelopment money. So the redevelopment money would go into the program. It was actually $25,000 first-time um, purchase assistance that, that the city would give. And then it, we would hold, it was either a second or a third um, on, on the, on the property. And then that would stay without any repayment back until they sold the property, then the city would get it back. Conversely though, over this time and my existence, being with the city for 12 years, is we lost a lot of money because some of those families lost their properties. And being in a third position, we didn't see a dime when, when someone were, were being foreclosed on. And so we had to write off numerous times those $25,000 grants, if you will.
Right. That's a good point.
That, that makes sense. Okay. And this um, seems relevant to tonight. Um, our housing element specifies a program H51B, which says affordable housing, affordable housing partnerships, saying that at least every two years, the city will continue to explore and evaluate opportunities to partner with nonprofit organizations to rehabilitate, preserve, or create affordable housing. Are we doing that?
Uh, I mean, we, as part of our-
We did. In fact, Jan, you, you could probably with MidPen, you can speak to that because we worked with MidPen on Charmin Palms to renegotiate the terms of the, the loans and $2.5 million of all redevelopment monies. So we worked in partnership with MidPen to preserve the housing stock out there.
And I'd just add that as part of our annual housing report, we document that. So that the point that Paul just made, again, every year we do an annual housing report and we document all of our work plan items in the housing element and our, how we're complying with it. So again, we've got, we've got one of those annual housing reports coming up here pretty soon as well.
Okay, I, uh, thank you. And-
Great.
I think that answers the question I had.
I, I just have one statement to make. You know, there are, I, I was glad that the whole discussion, Commissioner Rivlin, that you brought up with VTA, uh, because Stephen and I, was it last week, Stephen? We, we met with VTA regarding their interest to develop the Winchester Boulevard Station. Um, they definitely would want more density. Um, they're gonna put something together and send it our way, but they're very interested currently to develop that property, maybe take some of the Summer Winds uh, property as well, that's next to their parking lot there and, and develop that. So-
I think that's a prime location and I didn't get to it in my comment. Thank you, Director. Thanks for following up on that. I meant to make it more into a staff question too, but uh, I think that land is um, you know, not being utilized to its fullest and given its public partner, I, I guess it's still City of Campbell land, I mean, within our jurisdiction, but the county or the VTA org owns, owns the title, or I don't know how that even works.
VTA owns the property. Yeah.
Gotcha. And then we would, all of our zoning applies to the use of that land. So we'd have to either be creative or find um, you know, city council partnership to amend the general plan or the, you know, the zoning so we can build more, I guess. And all, all the height limits would apply as well, I assume?
It's, it's actually within the Winchester Boulevard master plan. And from how they describe their vision, they would certainly need to amend that plan to effectuate what, what their ideas are. Um, you know, we would need to see what they have in mind, but we did ask the million-dollar question, it's, you know, who's your developer? Do, do you develop VTA? And they said, oh, no, no, no. Would they, they would work to secure entitlements through a housing developer. Um, now, is that a for-profit or nonprofit? That would be to, to determine. Uh, but there should be um, something in, in the horizon in terms of developing that property.
May I ask one more question? I assume the other two stations, both Campbell's Too Narrow or owned by the city, uh, you know, it has weird easements. And then Hamilton's not accessible from a building point of view because of highway or other constraints?
Yeah, so the, the downtown station um, ba- on Orchard City Drive, you know, it's, it's an interesting uh, geography there in terms of what the city owns. The city does own a lot of that property at 300 Orchard City Drive. And we certainly own the, the parking lot next to Abelagio and Opas. You know, through the years, I've had conversations with Immoli Development um, to, to talk about, you know, what would their interest be in securing, say, a 99-year lease on the parking lot, develop um, commercial on the ground floor to um, you know, respond to the downtown, you know, commercial needs and then build residential above. They were very excited about that prospect. But, you know, that's for a staff member to, you know, um, mention that, you know, especially if we have a slow-growth council, you know, that's not something I would champion. But, you know, if, if uh, an affordable housing developer met with the for-profit and they kind of approached the city on their own, then maybe a conversation could be had there. But uh, there is a lot of opportunity. So I'm happy you brought that up as well because we've definitely thought about that.
So Paul, on the, on the VTA Winchester thing, is it, is it, is it affordable housing development or is it gonna be a for, market rate development? Or can we specify that?
Yeah, from, from what they reveal, they, it would definitely be market rate, but they, they have the ability to leverage funding for capital improvements to increase mobility to and from the site that of far stretched beyond what's physically connected in the front edge. For example, they can build a bike trail all the way to the Los Gatos, you know, bike path, for example. Uh, they can do certain things like that. And they did reveal, Stephen, did they reveal they would do more than their minimum? I, I forgot in terms of affordable housing.
Yeah, it sounded like they were doing something like 20%, but I, I don't want to throw the exact number on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that sounds very promising.
Yeah. Thank you for, for bringing it up. That's very exciting.
I, I'll just say one other thing I, I was trying to not get too out of, you know, the realm of reality, but Vancouver, I know it's not even an American city, but Vancouver British Columbia's Transit Authority owns every station and then develops super high-rise, you know, 40, 50 stories. I know we're not in that range in Campbell, but, you know, they've really leveraged that. So it's, it always kind of uh, gives me heart palpitations to think VTA is not focused to both bring housing and development to all the stations that they, you know, have partnership with. And hopefully Campbell can, you know, work with VTA and we as a planning commission and city council can all partner on this. Of course, focus to bring both housing to all, you know, walks of life. That would be the best, you know, win for everyone.
So um, Paul, uh, just saying that you brought up was that um, you know, you, you, as staff, it sounds like you're aware of uh, opportunities like this, but I, there needs to be some kind of direction from city council that they actually want this to happen for it to sort of move forward. Is this something that we're gonna talk a lot more about come general plan slash housing element time?
De- definitely during the housing element update. So the, the general plan update will be addressing the land use uh, density needs, which will eventually then tie into the housing element update that we're starting the RFP process currently to um, see what consultants are out there to help uh, augment staff and, and do most of the work. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a two-part thing, if not three-part. You have land use element that needs to fold into your housing element, which needs to fold into your transportation element. So all three kind of work in, in uh, you know, they're, they're three, they're three parts. So the housing element is gonna be the key.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I think we're all looking forward to uh, making a big impact on the city through the housing element and the general plan update. Did uh, did we have any um, anything to report to the commission, Director Kermoyen, as we wrap up the meeting?
Oh, and the, the director's report? Yeah, so while we're talking about housing, uh, Daniel uh, actually is uh, work, will be working on this project. So uh, at the last council meeting, the council was presented with a request to um, authorize this middle of a general plan amendment at 700, 700 West Hamilton. That's where the Culinary Institute is, the former Gold's Gym. So that corner, um, you know, the, basically, the, the gym is still there, but I don't think very active and I believe the lease is gonna expire soon. And the council was very open to allowing that property to, to change to um, to either mixed-use or full housing site. They haven't yet determined, uh, but certainly the ability for the, the developer uh, to submit an application to amend the general plan. And because the city is not obligated to entertain such a request, um, the council was open to uh, requiring i- if the applicant was willing, that they would submit an application that provided more affordable housing than the minimum. And only then the council would be willing to change the general plan. So it's the, you know, what's the benefit to the Campbell community? What's the benefit to the city for changing a property that's on C2 to housing? So that's another project that uh, seems to have some traction. Daniel and I actually had a meeting with the developers today, kind of a post-council meeting wrap-up to plot the, and chart the next steps. They do intend to submit an application for a pre-app that will go to the city council and then it will go to the planning commission. And the council also wanted to see a variety of housing types. So we're talking duplexes, triplexes, uh, vertical, um, apartments, single-family detached, sky's the limit. They, they want to see a variety of housing types that would address the different uh, demographic needs of, of, of the diversity of families.
And I would also add that as part of that uh, development agreement, they would also be compelled to exercise state density bonus law. So state density bonus law has been amended effective January 1st to now allow a 50% increase of density. So that would increase the density upwards to 40 units an acre, which for this property increases the unit count from 117 to about 176 units. It'll be a pretty hefty project.
Now, more than likely, they'll, they'll entitle the, the project, but they won't build it. They'll probably sell it, the entitlement to a housing developer. So, you know, I just don't know the relationship between a, you know, nonprofit affordable housing developers and for-profit affordable housing developers. But somehow those two need to get together so they can, you know, pull their, their clout to, to build, you know, these, these types of projects that are much needed.
So the 50% increase in density, um, can you explain that a little bit more? That's state law?
Correct. So density bonus, so the recently approved Mozart project, that was an example of the density bonus project. Uh, previously, density bonus allowed an increase in density of 35%. So a new law increases that up to 50%.
Thank you.
But there's really, a developer doesn't have to use density bonus. But as Paul alluded to, because a general plan amendment is a voluntary action of the city, we can then through a development agreement, get them to increase the density to the maximum allowed, do you see density bonus?
Thanks, Daniel. Thanks, Paul. That's a, that's very exciting. It's nice to see some um, opportunities um, for housing and I really love the um, the focus on having um, different types of housing. I think that's gonna make for a very um, well-rounded community.
It's a nice, it's a nice location.
Yeah, it's about, um, we're anticipating about 176 units. So it's gonna be, for Campbell, a, a big, a big development.
Yeah. Great. Great, well, thank you. And um, thank you to everybody for um, organizing for the staff and um, the director, as well as um, Adam for taking the lead on organizing this um, session. I thought it was really useful and um, and I think we all learned a lot. So it gives us a lot to think about and work with as we move forward. So thanks, everybody. This uh, concludes our uh, our meeting of the Campbell Planning Commission and I wish everybody a great evening.